Yes ma'am, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
I will. I will also stay masked, I hope you can hear me clearly because none of you are masked.
And we're six feet apart ma'am.
No, that doesn't count.
Okay.
Alright. At the last planning meeting, there was a discussion regarding the sidewalks law versus the ditch easement most homeowners must put up with in the new builds here in Berkeley County. I was used as an example where sidewalks would have been beneficial. Due to the lack of a sidewalk, I had fallen in the ditch putting out my garbage and getting my mail. Mr. Gant explained in a tone which was derogatory to me and other homeowners that perhaps we should read our covenants before bidding. The law regarding sidewalks does not appear in covenants. During these remarks, Mr. Copen paper came in and supported Mr. Gant on this point. Later, Mr. Copen paper went on the radio and further mocked my situation by saying I should have looked by a home with a sidewalk. In Berkeley County, this is not an easy thing to do. However, I am here concerned about the fact that Mr. Gant and Mr. Copen paper chose to speak of me as I cannot, as if I cannot read, nor do I have the common sense to buy the right home. This disparages me at a public meeting and on a radio program without either of them knowing me. It disparages every homeowner in Berkeley County. I assure you, I am well read and have bought and sold homes all over this country. Mr. Gant and Mr. Copen paper should not be serving on any board in Berkeley County where they take the stand such as this against their citizens. Mr. Gant owes me an apology. Mr. Copen paper owes me an apology. If any member of the commission chuckled with amusement at these comments, they also owe me an apology. All the aforementioned should consider stepping down from their positions. The people of Berkeley County are here to be served. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Helen Claire Grizzle. First name is Helen Claire, that's how I like to be addressed. 9274 Oakwood Drive in Martinsburg. Thank you.
And is that the address in Stonebridge ma'am?
Yes it is.
Thank you. Since I was called out on the floor, I'll address, and it's my time, you have no time to respond to my statement, okay? Items from the public. I think there were some words there said directed to me that is incorrect. Basically, what I did say was if someone wants a subdivision with sidewalks, there's other subdivisions out there to buy in. I never called you out, never said anything. And what I did say, Stonebridge Golf Course is probably forty to fifty years old, that community. Back then, absolutely wasn't required to have sidewalks, at all. Alright, so I think there's some things that were said here about me and Mr. Gant, that's not a hundred percent correct. So...
And there's also places inside the city that doesn't have sidewalks. A lot of areas inside the city that doesn't even have sidewalks here.
Yep, so unfortunately, you know, there's stuff going on that's incorrect. And if anybody wants to actually hear what was said, I'm sure they can pull up the minutes or listen to the radio. But there is choices in Berkeley County. If you want sidewalks in a subdivision, you go there. And I don't know how long you've been at Stonebridge, but again, that's a forty to fifty year old community. Never, never, I'm not asking for you to respond, never ever has had sidewalks in there. Never.
I understand that.
Okay. Alright. Anyone else? Yes sir.
How are you all doing this morning?
Good.
My name is Ben Thompson, resident here in Berkeley County. My question is more of one of representation on the council.
I can't believe I don't have a beer on yet.
My question is of representation on the council. I myself am a farmer in the county, and I was wondering if any of you have farming experience or currently operate a farm?
You talking about this council?
Yes.
We're elected by the people sir.
Okay.
I was born and raised on a farm.
The commission. More of the planning commission members' records, I think, of farmers. I apologize about the way I worded that. So, that's a little similar thing.
Okay.
And I'm the representative on the farmland, we've been there for quite a few years and we're doing very well sir.
Very good.
Yeah, sixty five, hundred acres I believe, something like that, sixty five farms.
Okay. That was the primary, as far as me and representation. Seeing where you guys work, if you're part of the county. I appreciate your time.
Yes sir. Anyone else? I'm sorry sir, can you come back up? Did you state your name for the record?
He did.
I'm sorry. I don't think he said his address.
Need your address sir.
Ben Thompson, it's 211 Walter Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Your word.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey sir.
John Christensen, Stony Lake Road, Martinsburg. I've been living here for forty years and know all of you, you know, for quite a while. I've, I've got concerns that the law is not being followed here in Berkeley County as far as having labor and farming representation on the boards. My previous speaker addressed the farming membership. I'm here to address labor. I've been on the Eastern Panhandle Labor Council for too long that I can remember. And I used to be on the Development Authority as a member of the labor community. And this was for many years. Several years ago, I was up for reappointment and I put in my letter and I was rejected. And I never did find out who replaced me as a labor representative on that board. It's in the law, it's in section eight A. It compels that the Berkeley County Council appoint a member from farming and labor to these boards, it's very important.
John, what's your definition of labor? Are you talking about organized, are you talking about organized, unionized labor or what?
Well, labor is considered people that control or organize certainly labor. And as a member of the labor council...
But not necessarily, not organized labor, right? Not unionized labor?
It could be, it could be unionized.
It could be, it could be.
But it has to be somebody that is in charge of a bunch of people or have been involved in the labor organization. So it's just that simple.
I don't think it says that. I don't think it says it has to be a member of a labor organization in order to fit that qualification. I think it could be somebody that has worked in an industry, that has worked in an industry that handled labor issues in that industry. I think there's a broad, broad spectrum of...
They're representing the company though, wouldn't they?
They could be a representative for labor on a board.
Could be.
That's exactly right.
Right, well, could be is the operative.
Right. So there's, and I don't think it's clear to what you're saying, but go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to lay it out here for you. I can't give you the whole picture in one sentence. This has been going on for years. This is not something that's new.
Is this just the development committee speaking?
No, I believe it's all the boards.
No, no.
Well, it's several boards. The one I'm concerned with is Planning Commission and Development Authority, the rest of the boards I haven't...
Well, the Development Authority has a member of labor and a member of farm...
Who, who on the Development Authority?
Bob Butler's a member of the Development Authority. Bob Butler's ninety-six years old and is a farmer in this area twice as long as you've lived here.
What about labor?
The labor is an individual... Huh? He's an individual from Procter and Gamble that's, I can't remember his name, but he's dealt with labor issues in Procter and Gamble around this country.
I'd like to meet the gentleman. So, I want to reiterate that. We had, we had a decision... We had, we had a decision, I think, by the former attorney for your council. And he, he made the statement that it was too general, that it was written too general, and there was no means for enforcement. Well, just because there's no means for enforcement doesn't mean you ignore the statute.
We just, I just said we didn't ignore it. It is, it is, it is filled correctly.
Well, so the Planning Commission as well?
I don't sit on the Planning Commission. That's not, that's...
And you're a labor representative?
No, I never said that I was a labor representative.
Do you have one?
I don't think it's a requirement. Yeah, I don't think it's a requirement.
Well, it is a requirement. Um, and the other thing I'm here for is because I, I'm a strong proponent of impact fees on these developers. We have these huge developments that are going in.
So you're, so you're saying that, and I'm, we're going way too far because I am from the public, we shouldn't have that law, but, you know, John, I respect you.
Right.
Okay? So who pays for impact fees?
I guess the homeowners eventually.
You're darn right, they pay for it.
Right. But they have sidewalks and sewers, and they don't have flooding and a lot of other issues.
Not necessarily.
I think that's a very vague statement.
Well, it is a vague statement, but I've seen the development...
Does your subdivision have sidewalks, John?
Excuse me?
Does your subdivision have sidewalks?
No, sir. It's an old, old, it was the first subdivision ever constructed in Berkeley County.
Right. But you still walk there?
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking, I was forty years younger. You know, I was in my twenties when I moved here. So, I mean, it's a little different now.
You live in Marwood Manor?
No, Stony Lick.
Yeah, Marwood Manor's fifty years older.
Well, I mean, it was, it was, uh, called the first subdivision when they had the Planning Commission and they... What I was told was it was the first permitted subdivision in Berkeley County, and it was prior to when I moved there. I think it's seventy, in the seventies. So in, in my district, there's, there's a lot of building going on, and I have no idea. It's hard to keep up with all the particulars of... There's one big development on 901.
Mm-hmm.
It's, how many, how many thousand houses?
There's not thousands. I think there is eight hundred and some projected to go in that subdivision.
Okay. That, that is a busy road, 901. That's the shortcut from Hedgesville. Everybody uses it. I mean, it's packed, and sometimes you can't even get on it. Um, you know, I'm concerned that it's going to be, you know, a huge burden to the people that travel that road.
And they're, and they're, that meets all the criteria from the state road that does the, does the traffic study and all that stuff.
Well, they are doing a good job.
The same as Alts.
Right. And, and they are doing a good job as far as what it looks like, the entrance and everything. They widened the road, so it does look pretty good. But I, I wonder, do they have sidewalks there, you think?
Uh, that's up to the Planning Commission and the regulation ordinances that's in place.
Right. Well, you know, with the COVID-19, with the, with the climate change impacts, I, I live downstream of all these developments in Hedgesville around, um, the Dunkin' Donuts and the DMV and Tony Petrusi's place there and the, the big development Laurel Ridge. All that water from those, all that development, all that pavement ends up in my backyard.
And they are directed and they do put in storm ponds and all that other stuff. So they meet the MS four criteria set by the federal government.
Okay.
All right.
But, but, but I've noticed a, a change in the water flow around my neighborhood to the point where we pretty much have a perennial stream now where we never had one before. It used to be just runoff, you know? It used to be like a...
I'm letting you go way too far, John. Typically, you have three minutes, okay?
All right. I notice on your application for appointment to commission authorities and boards, there's no mention of who the applicant represents. Again, I think, I think this would be something that you guys could discuss and, and make, make an arrangement so that labor or social workers, you know, or whatever group, it doesn't have to be mandated, but you want to know where these people are coming from. And, you know, I realize that you have to put down your party affiliation, uh, but I, I think that's kind of unnecessary, you know?
That's state code.
That's state code, all right. Well, okay, well, if it's state code and you're following state code, then put in there, who are you representing on the application? I think that would be helpful.
Okay, John, you got one more minute. I've already given you five or three.
Okay. And, and I do think that, you know, this county has grown so much in forty years. I mean, just unbelievable.
And you were one of those ones that made it grow?
Right. Yeah, I moved from Baltimore, and I was happy to get here. Very happy for a number of reasons. I could tell, I could go on for about an hour on that one. But, uh, you know, I, I think we're trying to do the best job we can. I'm not, I'm not here to disparage anybody, but I think we should follow the law. And I think if, if we need labor representation on these boards, we should have somebody from a bona fide labor organization. Somebody that's dealing with employees, you know, that's taking care of employees, not the company. Okay? That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you name for the record?
Hi, my name is Daniel Bennett at 173 Warley Court, Martinsburg, West Virginia. I want to thank the other speakers today who talked about representation on the Planning Commission. There is a reason why we're asking for representation on the Planning Commission, and that's because we need it, and it's statute. One of the things that I did when I've been looking through the minutes is see time and a time again where the ordinance, the county ordinance 705, which provides for pedestrian safety, says that there should be sidewalks. And time and time again, it was waivers were granted to the developer to not put in those sidewalks.
Can I, can I make one statement on the...
Please.
On, on the ones that have, that I've been involved with, that have had the waivers where because they were along a major highway, not within the subdivisions, they've been on a major highways, and those, those were a concern for pedestrian safety.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I did notice there was a difference between when there was a waiver given in a subdivision versus some of the times when it was a business owner who, who was on a major thoroughfare area. There is a difference, but sometimes those sidewalk waivers were given or within a subdivision where children walk to school, where people walk around, and they're in the middle of the street. They're in the middle of the street where, under the county ordinance, it should be safe because it says pedestrian safety is important. But in these subdivisions, you can't enforce the traffic signals, the stop signs, the posted speed limits. And so I'd say that in, in dusk, in dawn, when kids are walking, that's a safety issue that you could, that could have been helped by having proper representation on the board. I put in for FOIA Freedom of Information Act request to the county clerk to ask when there was an appointment of these people to the Planning Commission, whether or not it was looked at as to who they were representing, because under the state code, West Virginia 8A two dash two dash D, it says that people from labor should be, they must be represented. And in the county council's ordinances here, it says that farmers must represent. It isn't that they are farmers, it's they must represent. And so I'm gonna hopefully get from you that decision-making about how you made the decision to do it. But putting that aside, that's old business. The new business, I would ask, is that you take the time to find people who represent farmers, who represent labor. And even though it's not required, you find people like Helen Claire Grizzle who couldn't find easily a place that had sidewalk. There were other things that she had to look for, and she had to weigh those things. And yes, some of these things were done before, but some of these things were done after the Planning Commission. If you look through the minutes, you'll see that subdivisions were often allowed to go without sidewalks, even when they sit right on top of each other. Not when they're like two-acre, five-acre lots, but when they have a quarter, a half acre of lawn. So I want to thank them for coming up and them genuinely asking you to have people like them represented on the Planning Commission. This is crucial.
I got a couple of questions for you, Mr. Bennett. And I'm, I'm a person that's gonna tell you the truth.
Okay.
And look square at you, right, at us like we are now.
Yep.
Are you running a campaign?
I am here as a citizen who lives in a subdivision.
I ask you a question.
It's called Shepherd West.
Yes or no? Are you running a campaign?
I have filed to run for, uh, campaign, and I am here because when I started looking through my county to see what was important to the people who live here, this is what I found. People weren't talking about it. You went onto the radio and you talked about me. You talked about how people, it would cost too much to enforce those stop signs. That's what, that's what I heard.
Do you know, do you understand, do you understand how that process works? Do you understand how the regulations are? Do you understand how the regulations are adopted?
The sheriff on the radio said that people would not...
I'm not talking about sheriff. I'm talking about, you're talking about the Planning Commission. I'm asking you a question. Do you understand how the regulations are adopted for the Planning Commission?
I, I, I'm, I'm not... Why don't you explain to me what you're getting at?
I'm asking you a question if you understand the process.
It says in 705 for pedestrian safety that they should have sidewalks.
Do you, do you understand?
So when they know, when they know they can't change the traffic enforcement, they should even take more care to not grant those exceptions.
Our, our subdivision regulations are updated and changed regularly, and my suggestion...
And two years ago, when, and then two years ago, when someone was on that...
Hold on now. You gonna let me finish speaking, or are you gonna talk over top of me? You know what? You know what? Never mind, because obviously you're argumentative, and I don't want to go there. So finish your three minutes and, and have a seat.
My, my other question to you, Mr. Bennett, there's two questions I have.
Sure.
It's real simple.
Mm-hmm.
Did you organize these people to come in today?
I did reach out to them, yes.
I thought so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want a copy of the FOIA request that I've sent?
Uh, sure. Give it to me. You had, you've already had your time, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I didn't have my full time.
Uh, you had over three minutes.
I did, so...
I'm sorry. All right. Um, any other people from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, we have a ten o'clock...
Okay. All right. Okay, if you want to start us out on the public hearing, Mr. Davis, or Rachel, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, it's your two weeks ago to discuss the application for a community development block grant. Um, today I'd like to discuss, uh, the project that we hope to, uh, improve what we apply for. Um, that would be the expansion and renovation of the health department. Um, we would be asking HUD for three hundred and seventy-five...
Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm here to open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Public hearing has started. Sometimes I do that before, sometimes after, but...
Sorry.
No, that's my fault. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so we would be asking HUD for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The health department has agreed to match that at fifty percent, um, with another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar total project cost. Um, I'm sorry? So it will cover, um, all engineering and design, which I believe, um, we got approval from HUD for the health department to move forward, um, with signing the contract with the market sense. We have their next board meeting to get that started. Um, we would cover all schematics, um, would cover bidding, pre-bidding, um, all the conferences, and whole construction.
How much, how much?
Expansion.
Expansion and renovation of the current state, that's the critical one.
How many square feet we projecting ahead to?
Um, an additional two thousand square feet and renovation of the seven thousand that exists currently.
Okay.
Um, and the goal of this, uh, application is to assist the health department in being able to handle large influx of patients that may, may need treatment in the event of, of future pandemics, um, so...
The only reason I ask that, Rachel, is because seven fifty is gonna be really close. I mean, I, I think it's gonna be more than that.
That was the budget that Bill Kearns, that he would be able to support, um, if there were no grant laws.
Right.
So we're hoping that half that would be paid for HUD, so if there's any overs, definitely also...
Yeah, I, I think, just to let you know, I think it's probably gonna be in excess of a million dollars only because of the market today. Um, and we're creating, we're gonna create some more impervious hearing, which we will have to address from Stonewater.
Right. Um, yeah, and I, I did make that clear in the application that if there are budgets that, that was...
Okay, thank you.
Um, so with the council's approval, um, we'd like to move forward with submitting this application, and if so, give it to the director if you want next, if you want next.
Okay. Um, anybody here from the public? Anybody else?
Public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Rachel. All right. Anybody have any questions on the purchase order? Going back on change in status, um, we have a new hire recommendation received. There is no internal budget revisions. I'm sorry, Mr. Davis. No, uh, new hire recommendation received from Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator for Jerry, uh, Ap, yeah, I guess that's close. IT analyst with an annual salary of fifty-five thousand effective November the second, two thousand and twenty. Change in status received from Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator for Justin Hunt. He is going from IT Specialist Two to Level Three Supervisor with a salary increase from sixty thousand seventy-five dollars to seventy thousand seventy-five dollars effective September first, two thousand and twenty. Nine-one-one Director requested Tina Brennan be removed from payroll effective October the third, two thousand and twenty. Community Corrections Director requested Amanda Solo be removed from payroll effective October sixth, two thousand and twenty. Letter of retirement received from the Assessors Office for Tamara Egner. Tamara's here. Um, effective October thirty, two thousand and twenty. Congratulations, Tamara. Any questions on the, uh, change in status? All right.
I don't know, but I'm gonna miss Tammy.
Tammy's, Tammy's been a, been a huge asset to us.
Oh.
Um...
Her, her joyful demeanor will be, will be so much...
I think she ought to come up front.
Yeah, yeah. Put her on the spot. She love...
And then promptly roasts it.
All right.
Tell us how you really feel, Tammy.
Moving on, approval of the minutes for October first, two thousand and twenty. Everyone was present. Any changes or corrections on those? All right, moving on to the county council calendars. We'll be here next, uh, we'll be, actually, we're very busy today. Um, you know, we have eleven o'clock with the school board. We'll come, uh, back downstairs to voters, um, at one o'clock, and two o'clock, we'll be back in the chamber for Board of Assessment Appeals.
That is the change to one thirty?
Voters at one thirty. Okay, all right. We'll be in chambers on, next Thursday on the twenty-second, uh, nine thirty a.m. Scheduled for a one p.m. Board of Assessment Appeals, Boards and Commissions. Next Monday on the nineteenth, four p.m. Health Board, uh, for Martins, uh, Health Board here in Martinsburg, I guess that's what it's saying.
Four p... It's a zoom meeting.
Okay. Four p.m. Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, six p.m. Planning Commission, six p.m. Airport Authority. Tuesday the twentieth, nine a.m. WRNR Councilperson Elaine Moffel will be on. Eleven thirty a.m. Tuesday the twentieth, nine AM WRNR Councilperson Elaine Moffel will be on, eleven thirty AM Parks and Rec. Five PM Sewer District, six PM Stormwater District. Wednesday the twenty-first, one thirty PM H E P M P O. Uh, four PM, uh, Burke County Criminal Justice Board, six PM Solid Waste Authority. Thursday the twenty-second, five PM Ham Blasts Authority, five PM Library Board. Any changes or corrections on all those Board and Commission meetings?
Mr. Chairman, the Region Nine Planning Development Council will meet Monday the nineteenth at one PM.
Okay.
A zoom meeting.
Didn't have enough room to put it in there.
I was gonna say.
Full time.
Pretty busy week.
Not enough hours in Monday.
Nah. Any other corrections? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning. You have some, uh, personal property tax exoneration and a couple of real estate.
I do, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, first thing I have to do, the personal property officer error uh, sheet that we had to correct last week, this is actually two weeks ago, they had them waiting. But for the reasons that's listed there, there's a total of about seven of them. They add up to one thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Need a motion on the seven personal property tax exoneration due to officer error.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You have two real estate?
Well, I have one, uh, real estate officer, uh, exoneration we had to correct.
Okay.
Give a double deal, which is amount of seven dollars and eight cents.
That's a tough one. Alright.
I like a tight bill like that.
There you go, yeah. Uh, especially when it's on real estate side. Need, uh, need a motion on, uh, one, real estate tax exoneration due to officer error.
Second.
Got to be faster, Jim.
Yeah.
Got a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I do have this, uh, one for, uh, this, uh, parents Dunworth and Marilyn Holmes. They were scheduled at two o'clock this afternoon to meet and to afford a deal for the assessment of here. Um, I did this for, and they need an exoneration for twenty twenty. So I didn't know if you're going to do it now and approve it before two o'clock, because I understand that they're not going to come in if the exoneration is approved and they're just, uh, withdrawing their appeal. So I just wanted to bring it to you now, if you wanted to prove it, or if you want to wait till two o'clock and do it and.
I think you have a problem with us knowing it since it's not part of the agenda?
Um, I have no problem doing it that way, otherwise we would just eat and they would pretty much come here for a hearing.
For no reason.
Be for their, they come to the ring, but they're essentially set up.
Okay. Alright. Motion.
It is down at the, it's, it's, it's on the waterfront on, uh, the waterfront property. But all of them in that subdivision are, the lots go down to water. This one doesn't touch the water. And it was put on as a waterfront property, which, you know, calculates a little bit higher. And so we had to correct it, so that's the reason we corrected it for this year. That is the reason for their appeal, because of the value of it. So, but we've done the exoneration and it's, uh, it's a matter of two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ten cents.
President, I'm ready to check the, the, the real estate exoneration for Terrence Dunworth in the amount of two seventy-four ten.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
They're good, thank you, that's all I have.
Right, at two o'clock.
So we're all for that, we're done with it.
Alright, Board of Meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, the, uh, first I want to note the passing of Mary Lou Largent.
Yes.
Yes. She, I met Mary Lou when they were building Baker Heights. Fired, I mean, she was, uh, a better to lay out the kitchen. And I was impressed with her, her dedication to the auxiliary section of Baker Heights. And of course, she has maintained that dedication up to her death and, uh, one of his women acknowledged. She passed and she was a very good member of Baker Heights.
And was an advocate for all.
Yeah, especially maybe. Joy, joy to watch.
I told, I told her son Marty, I said, uh, one thing I enjoyed about your mom was you knew where she stood.
Yeah.
You know?
Good question, good question.
And, and that's an asset. They're the right people, now for the wrong people, that, that is like, they, they frown upon that and call us all kinds of things. But, uh, I'd much rather know where somebody stands, because that's where we get things done.
Yeah, and I'm back in late eighties when we built the place.
Right.
Very strong advocate then and continue all the way.
Yeah.
But my, uh, my board meeting was Burke County Public Service Department, talking about spending money. Gee, with, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand total for groundwater investigations of Burke County, seven day yield tests for Springdale Farms.
I was gonna say, that's on the south end.
Yep.
Which is needed.
Well, that's, that's just preliminary.
Okay.
Uh, four hundred thousand dollars to design to upgrade the plant at the woods. Seventy-five thousand dollars for Grapevine Construction Administration, there to Grapevine, uh, lateral.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand for Springdale Water Plant Design for Newberry, which is minor. Construction agreement for Arcadia Springs, thirty-eight lots, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, discussion for some implementation for three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And then, uh, they're, of course, talking about replacing South Burke Water Plant. And there are several ways to go on that, but they finally decided the best way to go would be to replace South Burke Water Plant, rebuild it. And also build a plant at Springdale Water.
Kind of pre-treat that plant, right?
Well, you know, it would, it would treat it.
It's a full-blown plant.
Aut- autonomous water plant. The other option was just pipe the water to Bunker Hill, which is kind of a wash for price, but getting it across eighty-one would be a problem. So they decided to put two in.
That's right, because Springdale is on the other side of eighty-one.
And, uh, Springdale, then they have a presence on that side of eighty-one, because they figure that's going to be the development area in the future. And then they would have a plant over there. And the discussion started at about four forty million dollars. That's just the plants, and then they got the infrastructure, because they have to put another water tank over on the other side of eighty-one, because elevation's too high to service from the airport. So it would, I'd, I'd say fifty million dollars. And they'll probably reach out, of course, it, it sort of depends on the, uh, uh, seven day yield test with Springdale and see it.
And so, so far, those tests have shown good results.
Yeah, but they, they got the seven day yield test to come yet, which is, you know.
With, with all that, with all that said, Mr. Barnhart, I guess, I mean, we're buying a, a decent amount of water from the city of Markburg.
About a million gallons a day.
Right, so would this actually allow us to kind of cut back a little bit?
Probably.
Transmission lines and stuff?
Yeah, you're talking about years.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, of course, with Corox and Procter and Gamble, of course, they're talking about additional property. You know, it just, the, the water use on the south end of the county is increasing, they can handle it now, but in a dry year, they can't.
Well, and, and, and the other thing too, and we've had this conversation a little bit, one of the things that we've really got to start looking at is our sewer capacity on that end too.
Well, that's not, that's not my area.
Right.
Currently stands area, but yeah, it's all got to go together. But yeah, at least fifty million dollars.
Right. Sir, I'll please, okay, you change.
Okay, I've had several meetings this week and several sidebars, but, uh, one meeting we had with Landmarks, and right now we're working with Chad, uh, with the information on the Doughboy to, to, to go on our website. What has happened is, uh, Landmarks, Todd has been working with the National Park Service to assist with restoration. And some of the things that they require, one of which is a neutral zone for any designated funds for restoration. So, and he's worked with the War Memorial Park, so Becky Linton has opened a designated fund at City Bank, and War Memorial Park has agreed to transfer the funds there that have been donated. Because they don't, they don't want any conflict of interest on anything on that, so this has been a, a process trying to get through to meet all the, uh, goals and objectives. The, uh, petty, petty groom monument that got destroyed on the south end of the county has been taken over, uh, working with the uh, insurance company, uh, with two engagement, Confederates Association. And their location right now is they're trying to get permission to put the private highways, to put it in Morgan Morgan, and then somebody wants it on a private property of the people that own that, uh, that historic home there. So right now that's up in the air.
Can you back to Morgan Morgan?
At the, at the bridge right down Route eleven.
Oh.
There, there's, it's, there's a little mini park this part of the highways, which to me would be secured, because if someone's going to hit a draft, go down over the highway, go down in, inside there, because it's right against the rate.
It's a huge monument.
Yeah. Yes, it is, but if we're going to be moving it, doing all this, and, um, as I said, Todd.
Who put the monument up?
The Confederate ladies way back, uh, about nineteen hundred or so. And if we had to establish ownership and Doughblue, whichever, I think it was North Carolina, uh, finally got the release on that. That's been, this has been months trying to get this taken care of. Um, and I have in my possession a lady, a, a letter of thanks, appreciation from the Landmarks Commission for community service, what, with Tommy Hawkins. For making us not keep with the Quaker Cemetery, which is our, one of our oldest cemeteries from seventeen forties.
Oh, on Noble Avenue.
I'm telling you, the service hours have been invaluable to the commission and the willingness of Hawkins to assist in the challenge. So I want this as part of the record, here's the thank you letter from Landmarks. Give that to Penny. And, uh, one of the other issues that we're having, uh, for those of you, uh, aware of the Berkeley County being a hot property. Everybody is, the real estate agents are all driving Landmarks, uh, persons, personnel crazy, there's only two. Uh, researching properties, because if they're available for historical, uh, credits, everybody's trying to sell this piece of property because of historical credits. And they're averaging four and five properties a week. And it, there's only one or two people that are volunteer, it's all volunteer, and they're going crazy trying to keep up with all this material. So it's a very active, small group, and, uh, one thing I found out, on the end of Tenio Street, which is opposite, uh, Green Hill Cemetery, uh, there was a home that was supposed to be the Stephen Adams House, actually was a brewery, found that out in my travels the other day.
Probably could have been both.
Well, it was a house and a brewery, but the historical tax credit is coming from the fact that it's a brewery. So.
I can understand being, having a brewery if you're a politician.
Oh, yeah, so that was the, that was, uh, Landmarks, and in farmland, a lot of things happening, um, the Boydville Community Committee, excuse me, Matt, and, um, they're working with MS Four trying to get some additional parking. And there's some type of medium, it's a, it's a, uh, uh, I don't know, it's plastic or vinyl or whatever it is, that they can put on the grass and then they can park on it. Because the grass can go through it in order to keep the stabilization of the property. So this is one of the issues that they're working through with the MS Four Committee.
The, uh, there's quite a number of materials, Geo.
Geo grid.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Geo grid, and as I said, they've got a number of materials and they're working with the state and the MS Four, because you're working on a historical property, so uh, that's getting close to fruition, they had hoped to have it placed by this spring, they're going to be lucky if they get it in by next spring.
That'd be a good thing for all those car lots that just pop up in front yards along Route eleven.
It certainly would, that's a, that's a pet peeve with me, Dan.
That's, that's why I just poked you a little.
I tell you, that's okay. So anyhow, right now for next year, we have four point seven eight million committed, uh, for properties coming in. And of course, by December, we'll have the, the additional, so applications are now being accepted, uh, for additional farmland. And our number right now is sixty-five farms and six thousand acres, and we said goodbye to the member that had been on it for eight years, uh, ten years, eight or ten years, with Barbara Martina. This was her last meeting. Uh, Roundhouse Authority, Matt. And, uh, uh, we had a lot of things going on, um. We got an estimate, Jimmy Ricker come through with the estimate on the Miller Tower, which is approximately fifty thousand. So we're trying to see if there's any grants or anything out there for that particular project. The CVB, uh, is working with Main Street Christmas and will pay for Christmas lights of the Roundhouse. So right now, HD and Mike will be working to figure out how, how many lights we need, and CVB is going to pay for it, and we're going to put those up. As part of the, I believe it's a drive-through type Christmas that Main Street's doing with everything, so.
A walk-through.
A walk-through, drive-through, depending on, on which area they are. Uh, so that's, that's tremendous. Um, then we had, uh, the gentleman that is working with us, uh, from, uh, the graduate school is going to develop, he was accepted to develop the blacksmith shop exhibit, which will be done with the National Park Service, as far as the way the displays are done. So I think that's a major plus. We had, in the last two weeks, we've had several weddings, and the, uh, as of January first, our wedding rental costs will go up. The restrooms are done, but we have a technical difficulty, uh, everything with the fire sprinkler system. Everything has been approved except one item, and it didn't meet the fire inspection, because the design and stuff didn't allow for a generator, and that is supposed to be there. So right now, that's discussion between us and Alfonso.
Generator for what?
You're going to have a generator to, uh, handle the, the dry system if the electric goes out.
Yeah.
And this, this is something that, you know, it's all of a sudden, another item we've got to follow up on. We're going to get it done completely, that, that's the goal, guys, I'm working on it.
We can, we can donate the first roll of toilet paper, you know?
Alright. Got a gold, got a gold roll?
I don't know, Tracy's pretty tight on, uh, supplies.
You mean Teresa?
Teresa's pretty tight on.
And we had the tour of the restaurants last night, instead.
Tour of the restaurants?
And we tell you the reason why.
They want coed one of them.
No, there's, no. But good old Sted, he's been there, and he kept saying he was not going to see those things flush before he died. So by God, we brought him in and flushed it for him.
There you go.
So you know, there's, there's priorities, you know?
Hopefully you gave him a little bit of privacy.
Yes, we did. So anyway, there's been a lot of things going on, and there are different ones, or meaning, we're looking at the roof guy, uh, somebody's come in, look at the roof, you're talking about different things with, with the stress and all this. And trying to get, A with B, trying to get everybody up on the roof, so. Because I asked the one guy, I said, are you sure you're going to be able to, you, you, you know what we're talking about when I'm talking about a roof? He said he did, so anyway, so that's what we're looking at for next week, so.
Alright.
Busy week.
Mr. Delia?
Uh, I did have a development authority meeting yesterday. Um, the, uh, uh, I guess the highlight of that meeting was their, they, the board approved a lease, and I say the board, I was not part of that. They approved a lease for, uh, individual that I've done business with before, so I recused myself from the discussion and abstained from voting on any of that. Another, another lease on a small parcel in one of the buildings, and then, uh, um, we did make a motion, well, actually, I did make a motion to give Sandy a raise. She had not received a raise in a couple of years, where the staff, um, gets it automatically, so we did give her a boost in pay.
What's your, how many people you got on the table?
In the development authority? There's three on there. Yeah, and we, we're in a discussion, we had a little bit of discussion about, uh, you know, how that grows and what's happening. So I think next month, uh, there'll be a deeper discussion about, um, staffing, that type of thing.
Sorry to interrupt. I didn't have any meetings, but I do have planning commission coming up, and we'll be discussing a couple of the items that were brought forth here today to make sure that we are in compliance. I'll try to see if I can't attend that one. Go ahead.
Alright, um, had firework and, um, everything's going well, they, uh, Mr. Davis had done the proposal to, uh, for our public safety, um, org chart one day, uh, we also, um, they are purchasing new tablets, because the tablets are outdated and, and, uh, going bad. Um, they're in the process of renewing their insurance policy, they. They're going to update the policy and procedural manual. Basically, and that was brought up because one of the chiefs wanted a new fire hose and said it needed to be replaced and it was ten years old, but never got used hardly, if any. So that's what made me trigger that we need to update our policies and procedures and make that our bible as we're making these decisions. And plain and simple, if the chief or a fire hose wants to replace something before it needs to be replaced, which it was proven that it didn't have to be replaced because everything's pressure tested, that's their job to do it, not the Fire Ward's. So in that instance, it's basically because the chief wanted to change it from five inch to four inch. The Baker Heights Volunteer Fire Station, as I told you last time, is moving forward. It's been, the board approved the builder and the contract amount. And that's pretty much it. Mr. Barnhart spoke about Mary Lou and we all, we all know Mary Lou. And she was absolutely dedicated to the fire and rescue, not just fire, but rescue. She was, she done a lot of work on the rescue side. And will be sadly missed from the, from the community which she served.
President, I had one item I forgot. Because of this hot real estate market, we transferred the last one, it was two hundred mile house, one hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Well, since we're adding one item, I'd like to add something too, just for a point of clarification. We've had a couple of discussions here recently about, about boards and whether or not we're getting proper representation, that type of thing. And the question that was asked today, not only was I raised on a farm, I am a member of the Farm Bureau and have been for years. So, so I have a lot of very good friends that are farmers and, and look at that side of everything that we look at as part of it. So I, I do have a broad understanding of farming. As well as, one of the discussions was the HOAs. And HOAs have been high on my priority for many years. Not only have I formed HOAs, I've sat on HOA boards for the past twenty years and heavily involved in those.
Well, I mean, that's one of our conversations when we do bond releases and bond reductions and make sure that everything's aligned for them.
Right.
All right, we have some reappointments for the LAPC.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve, I guess Jeff.
Wilkerson.
Wilkerson, Steve DeRitter, LeAnn Drust, Amanda Singh. Drust?
Drust.
Okay, Drust. Amanda Singh and Randy Lilly.
Our own Randy Lilly.
All right, motion's been made. Do we have a second here? Any discussion? If not, all on paper say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. I guess, Mike, you're here for a reason there. And Rhonda?
President, just a reminder, you're scheduled to meet in board meetings.
I know, tried, should have skipped over board and.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
For the record, my name's Matthew Pennington. I work for the Eastern Panhandle Planning Development Council. I'm here serving as a proxy for Bill Clark, our executive director. He's on assignment that knocked on doors for another project. He's part of work. Wanted to take this time to, came in front of you, it's been quite some time, but to introduce you to a new hire that has brought on every month. We're extremely, extremely happy to have Mr. Rhonda Monroe take over as the program for economic resiliency in response to COVID-nineteen. The Economic Development Agency, the Federal Economic Development Agency, offered up some grants back in the spring that planning development councils were able to apply for to bring on some technical assistance. We've posted a position to focus on economic resiliency as well as health resiliency and trying to get some hazard mitigation work done. So Rhonda's been at work, dugling a lot of the recent advertisements that the governor's office has been putting out. And she's here before you to present on some of the opportunities that she's come across and introduce herself. So thank you very much. I'll be here if you have any extra questions for me. Rhonda?
Thank you. Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning, how are you?
Going well.
Thank you, Matt. Bill says it's for Gregs, and as Matt told you, he is out knocking on doors in Morgan County. My name is Rhonda Monroe. I am an economist by trade. I have degrees in economics, finance, and a master of business administration. My undergraduate work was at Mount St. Mary's University. And that was actually the first time I came to Martinsburg because I shopped at the old Blue Ridge.
Up near Emmitsburg?
In Emmitsburg, exactly. I shopped at the old.
Gold Mountain.
Gold Ma, yes. It is an honor to be here before you today. I'm a native Washingtonian. I began my career as an economist with the Department of Commerce, the Bureau of Economic Analysis. And I've come full circle because this position is funded by the Department of Commerce, but the EBA, the Economic Development Administration. I am a native Washingtonian, but by all accounts, I am a West Virginian. I love this state. I came to the Eastern Panhandle in two thousand and four. I got acclimated, I wet my feet in education here. I began to volunteer in the community. I served on the board of the hospitals for six years. I served on the board of community alternatives to violence, and I even won the governor's services. So I am by all accounts a true West Virginian. But that's not why we're here today. I wanted to share a little bit about my background and who I am so you get a feel for the, my passion for the work that I'm doing for the council. And my chair, Jim, invited me to share some of that with you today. So when I got on board two months ago, roughly two months ago, the governor had just announced funding in mid-July for small business grants. And as you all are aware, I'm sure you're aware, West Virginia's businesses are ninety-eight point nine percent small business. So we're a small business state, and that includes farmer, as councilperson Billy had mentioned, farming. And so he announced these grants, but it was a really convoluted process. And what had to happen was everyone who wanted to apply for a small business grant had to become a vendor with the state through the West Virginia Oasis vendor self-service process.
Is that the five thousand dollar grants that's out there?
It is. It is the five thousand, two thousand dollars. And the good thing about the two thousand dollars is that funding was not available initially for sole proprietors. And so there was a lot of pushback because farmers were excluded, barbers, anyone who didn't have any employees, if they were self-employed, they were not eligible to receive this funding. So it was a big win for our communities, for Region Nine, that these smaller businesses who were sole proprietors were able to apply for this funding. But you had to get, become a vendor with the state. And then you had to apply for the grant through a portal. Well, it was a convoluted process. And I hit the ground running, meeting with people in the community, not necessarily businesses, but the heads of the chambers and the convention of visitors, viewers. And they said, I keep getting questions from my constituents on how to apply for this process. And so I saw an opportunity for Region Nine to facilitate that process. And so I created some instructions for the West Virginia Oasis process. And I actually sat with the local business here in Martinsburg, went through the entire process with them, documented that process, screenshot it, put it in a PowerPoint, put explicit instructions as to how to become a vendor with the state and then how to apply for the grant. We were able to disseminate that through various channels to over a hundred people within our network, and then they extended it to their networks. And so we were really beneficial statewide. And you'll remember that because you'll hear that again. So statewide, we disseminated this information. We decided to supplement that and hold two technical sessions. And so we were able to have some public-private collaborations. We, Valley Health, which is now in Spring Mills, volunteered their room for us. Blue Ridge partnered with us and gave us services. And we held these technical assistance services. And we helped people in all three of the counties that Region Nine represents. And we also helped people beyond that. The governor's office had sent someone from this region and someone from Hampshire County also attended the session by Zoom. They were in person and by Zoom. And so I know you have somewhere to be, I'll wrap it up. But we were able to make a great impact for farmers. We partnered with Nathan, who works with agriculture. And so farmers, this information was available to them and they found it very useful. We got it statewide. And as a result, the next time the grant, next round of funding got announced, the governor referred everyone to the regional council.
That's great.
And so that's a brief summary. That's one thing that we've done. We just wrapped up a reporting period, September thirty, if we finish the small business report. And we're moving on to our larger report. We're helping public utilities now. And then shifting our focus back to the comprehensive economic development strategy for the region. And we're going to update, update that in light of COVID. So we'll be reaching out to local authorities, meeting with them so that we can get their input, how they were impacted by this pandemic, and how we can go forward building resilience. I thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it and I'm proud to be working for you and with you to make this region a better place.
Rhonda, sounds like we're the lucky ones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here, thank you.
All right.
All right. This just shows you how Region Nine is trying to adapt to local conditions and expanding our footprint.
Sure, absolutely.
There's been a lot of things that's been created here in this Eastern Panhandle that the state has taken on, took to.
Yeah, Matt.
Anything else, if there's any other questions from council?
I don't think so. Well, right, we got held over a little bit this morning.
All right, have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Next on our agenda, Mr. Davis, you need, you know, you need to make it short. We have all the MOUs signed by all the volunteer fire stations. They were in your read ahead, and we need to approve those so we can send them on to the Fire Marshal's office.
They're all the same. We have five masters that are identical. The only differences are there, we did add an addendum for Baker Heights, which reflects twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five per firefighter coverage with three firefighters. And the addendum for Backstreet Valley, which reflects that you have one firefighter, EMT, and one EMT is signed by the ambient authority, requesting a council's approval of the MOUs. And if a council president vote in favor and keep vote in air, permission to sign all five of them plus the addendums.
Need a.
So move.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all on paper say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Just one last thing, I just want to publicly congratulate council on successful refinancing of two point three eight million dollars of the nine-one-one central dispatch facilities bond at one point two five percent. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alan, for your continued focus on making those things happen.
Yeah, all right. Need, I guess we'll take a break and we'll re-adjourn at eleven o'clock at the school board.
I was trying to explain to that guy how he could get into the process of.
Hey, thank you, guys, I really, I see a wonderful team, I really do.